Michelle spends countless hours planning, organizing, baking, and attending best buddies events. She genuinely cares, genuinely cares, about the well-being of all of the students at Montpel High School. On behalf of the students and staff, I would like to acknowledge Michelle for all that she does for the communities of Bristol and Warren. And I highly recommend Michelle as our 2016-17 Nomination for Support Person of the Year. Rockwell School, Shawn Hollins, Teacher Assistant. Shawn Hollins has transitioned this year to be our full-time Building Assistant, and she has embraced her new responsibilities in a serious manner, jumping in to learn and cross-training in all aspects of running a school office as well as a safe and healthy lunch recess environment. She attended a training in play strategies and plans along with her other teacher assistant cohorts to introduce new indoor and outdoor games with the students during recess. Shawn often consults with other professionals in the building when she notices a student who may need some extra emotional or behavioral support. Every day she demonstrates the flexibility to go or do whatever the needs of the day dictate to keep Rockwell School running smoothly. Shawn Hollins is reliable, takes initiative, has a nice rapport and understanding of our students. She is always willing to pitch in and lending in. She comes to work every day with a smile on her face. Her positive attitude is reflected in her work ethic. For the above reasons, I wholeheartedly condone Shawn Hollins as Rockwell Support Person of the Year. Oliver Administration, Tammy Borges, Secretary to the Director of People's Personnel Services. So at this point, I think that Tammy and I have been together for about 12 years, Tam?
Ten plus.
Ten, okay. It feels like 12. And what could I say about somebody who actually keeps me on the straight and narrow for 10 years, keeps me in line, gets me to where I need to go? We have a very busy, busy office filled with financial deadlines, legal deadlines. Our special educators throughout the district look to Tammy for the information that they need to serve our students every day, and that is there in the most efficient manner. It's not always easy to get information from other districts, and so she is on those folks like a dog with a bone, let me just tell you. And she works tirelessly, actually, when it comes to our budget season. And just this week, our budget was due, our big budget was due, and we heard within a day or so that it was in perfect condition. And that is what I always know when I ask Tammy to do something. She is not only my assistant, but as well an assistant to the entire special ed department throughout the district. So thank you, Tammy. Great job. And now I give you Dr. Hendrick. Thank you. I didn't forget you, Dr.
All right, no, that's good.
Who will present Support Staff Person of the Year for the district.
So one more hand for our son Harold. It is my pleasure to present the Support Person of the Year to Michelle Costa. Everybody, right here, please. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
To honor our Division for Learning Disabilities Outstanding Educator Award, I introduce to you Leslie Anderson, Director of People's Personnel Services. So we've had some very exciting and interesting developments in our department over the last several years. A number of years ago, we got involved with a grant that has brought us to a place of national recognition and national work in, through summits, through DC, the US Department of Ed, and the Office of Special Populations. We are being followed and honored by the Council for Exceptional Children, which is a 27,000-strong membership. The Division of Learning Disabilities is about 5,000 member. And there are no words better than the ones that were emailed or mailed to me based on the award. So I'm going to read you the letter. And so, "Dear colleagues, I am the President of the Division of Learning Disabilities of the Council for Exceptional Children. I am writing to you on behalf of the Professional Development Standards and Ethics Subcommittee. PDSE selects the winner of our DMD Outstanding Educator Award. It is my honor to tell you that your entire team, including Director Anderson, is the recipient of the 2017 Outstanding Educator Award. I cannot tell you how excited the PDSE, the Executive Board, and I am to give you this award. We have never given the award to an entire group like this, but the nomination we received made clear that you are worthy deserving of this award. You were nominated by Dr. Devon Current, and he wrote about the amazing work you were doing. And he wrote as follows. "It has been my pleasure to work with the teachers in the two Bristol Warren schools for the past four years to support them in implementing intensive intervention as part of the National Center for Intensive Intervention. In the past year, the entire special education faculty have done something truly remarkable. They all agreed to participate in a pilot National Center for Intensive Intervention project to build a four-course sequence to help teachers improve their skill in doing intensive intervention. This is extraordinary in two ways. This is a major commitment of time and effort over two years, and they showed little hesitation in participating. This is also a pilot project, so the materials are not yet polished. They have taken all of this in stride. I have worked with many wonderful groups of teachers. This group of teachers has stood out in how they have maintained enthusiasm over the course of busy school years. It is truly a pleasure to see them every time I visit the district. They inspire me to do better work to match the high expectations these extraordinary individuals have for themselves. They are not looking for accolades, although they deserve them. Most importantly, they join this project because they care about the students and children that they work with. This is evident when I talk with teachers and visit their schools. Some of my favorite stories of student success come from this lovely New England town." Rebecca Zumetta M. Edmonds, Principal Researcher of the American Institute for Research, also shared her reflection. "As one of the Directors of NCII, I have been privileged to work with many outstanding schools and districts. The educators in Bristol Warren worked hard to implement intensive intervention for the first five years of NCII's work, and we received many reports of individual student growth. These teachers all agreed to participate in the pilot project. It is a major commitment, and the teachers have fully embraced it. The team of Bristol Warren exemplifies the kind of commitment that is so critical to improving outcomes for students with intensive learning needs. This remarkable group is very deserving of this award." The coaches and project manager for the pilot project also wanted to share their thoughts about the group overall, and the coaches wrote, "The Bristol Warren teachers are remarkable in their steady focus on student learning outcomes. They seek to improve their own practice to improve student learning. As a group, they are reflective and flexible, open to making changes that benefit students. As a group, they are modest and even a bit humble, well-aware that there's always room for improvement and growth. As a group, they are not satisfied with being good. They strive to be the best. And I have been impressed with their continuing desire and actions to be the most effective teacher possible for their student. I can add little more to these words. It is my honor to congratulate you on the outstanding work you are doing. It is a pleasure to call you colleagues in our efforts to provide the best education to students with learning disabilities. You are truly teaching L.D. Sincerely, Linda H. Mason, Ph.D., President of the Division of Learning Disabilities Council for Exceptional Children, Professor, University of North Carolina Chapel Dell." So I couldn't be prouder of my teachers who have participated. And you're going to be called up individually, Marjorie? I don't have a list. I will call you up individually. Thank you. So first, Caroline Anderson. Stephanie Brightmeyer. Sergeant Rockland. Ms. Jones Bedero. Kristen Correa. Jennifer Randall. Nicole DiNello. Christine Dutra. Melissa Gannon. Jennifer Harrington. Sarah Wolfelder. Julie Lawson. Danielle Singen. Lisa Martin. Amy McKenna. Kayla O'Connell. Lily Corrado. Bonnie Kansa. Mrs. Calado. Lynn Perry. Erica Peters. Liz Lefino. Denise Quinlan. Richard Jerry. Paris Silva. And last but not least, Mr. Mike Teas. So virtually, the entire special ed department for Bristol Warren is participating in what is becoming the national model, model for teacher training. And so we're working with many universities and the Department of Ed to acknowledge this work through an endorsement and through the certification office. And we will be the first in the country. So thank you all for coming. Thank you for your hard work every day. It is a pleasure and an honor to work with all of you.
I know it's, oh, wait a minute. I know it's tough to get Leslie to be quiet for two minutes.
And this is the plaque that gave us.
You belong here, too. So I want to, again, just recognize, this is the second time in the district in about five years that we were fortunate enough to have a National Teacher of the Year in our district, in this department. Again, a testament to collaboration and community when we talk about learning and growing together. To have a whole department recognized as one National Teacher of the Year is truly remarkable. So thank you for all your work. Before we clap again, we also want to recognize Leslie Anderson for her leadership. I don't think the certificate is over there, but Leslie this year is the Rhode Island Special Education Administrator of the Year as well. After the led-up, Leslie Brad, is there any doubt that there would be any other? So congratulations, Leslie. I'm making sure Patrick can get this picture. This is a wide-angle one. And that's what it sounds like every day. Listen, I know that I'm not used to doing this on this night, and I apologize to you, but we actually have a little bit of business that we have to take care of. All right, if we can get back to finishing up our little initiative that we have to do, it would be one... Right, so to continue on with our agenda, the next thing on our agenda is the Share Persons Initiatives. And what's there is really a report out. At our last meeting, when we went into executive session, before we did, I indicated that we were going to be taking action in the executive session. We came out of the executive session in an open session, voted on two items that we took action on in executive session in the effort to be totally transparent. I'm here tonight looking to report out what those votes were. And there were two votes that were taken. One was with regard to our superintendent's performance for this current school year and the fact that we, as a school committee, voted to award him a bonus for his performance in that executive session. And we also, at that point in time, voted on a new three-year contract so we could keep Mario around for another three years. And I, just reporting that out, it's all public information. If anyone has any comment or would like any further set, please let me know. If not, we'll move on to Superintendent's Recommendations and Issues.
Recommendation S. 2017-41. That the school committee upon the recommendation of superintendent approve the Chromebook lease agreement to support the district's future-ready plan. Motion approved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Staviano, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Pauline, can you explain the differences between the two? I noticed that the lease is a little bit more. Why are we deciding whether you're proposing the lease versus the purchase option?
Sure, by leasing, it allows us to get all of the Chromebooks into the students' hands at one time rather than phase-in. And the cost per device rose...
Thirteen dollars.
Thirteen dollars is the difference in the cost per device, getting them all at once rather than the phase-in.
And how long was the phase-in approach?
Three years.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
In reviewing the documents that we were provided, I just had a couple of clarifying questions more than anything. I couldn't tell from the lease itself how long the lease term is?
It's a three-year term.
It's a three-year term? And then, on the going-forward basis, do we have options to renew the lease if we don't need new devices? Or is there a plan going forward to what we do at the end of that three-year term?
Well, very frankly, at the end of three years, the devices will be worthless. They will have reached the end of their life. I'm not sure. I'm sure Rose, or our IT director, could speak to that.
Good evening. We do have a five-year device plan, and I'm not sure if that was provided to you, but if it wasn't, I can certainly provide it to you. And at the end of the three-year lease, there's a dollar higher.
And will make decisions at that point as to whether we need to be either purchasing new devices to replace the ones that we have or buying on a dollar-per-device basis the ones that we have leased?
Like Pauline said, at the end of three years, the Chrome device is no longer supported by Google. So I'm not sure what we want to do. We want to offer that to the kids to purchase for a dollar. But the device plan is a five-year plan. I do have a plan that is for, or we do have a plan, that is for purchasing devices and for leasing devices. So like what Pauline said, in order for us to get more access for the kids and provide devices to more students, it is more reasonable for thirteen more dollars per device instead of just doing three grades for the Chromebooks. We're able to do the rest of the grades.
As well, it sets out the cost. It sets out the cost at a fixed rate, at least for those three years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mine is a question I just wanted to make a little off there. I think it's absolutely wonderful that we're able to do student equity by being able to give every single student an opportunity to have one. And so I thank you for that.
Any other comments or questions? Are we not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You guys have it next.
Recommendation S. 2017-42. That the school committee upon the recommendation of superintendent approve the Rhode Island Department of Education of Bristol Warren Regional School District School Construction Memorandum of Agreement.
No move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McBride, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
I don't know who the most appropriate person to do this is, but I think that it might be helpful just to provide an overview of what projects that this memorandum of agreement is going to cover for your committee.
Well, the comment I'll make, and I know Marjorie comes before your committee, these projects have been approved by this committee on more than one occasion and by the Building Subcommittee. The only thing that's really here for us is to sign the memorandum. Because what happened is, we've applied to RIDE for construction housing aid reimbursement, and they want us to just take a formal memorandum. There's a memorandum that will be passed out to everyone looking for signatures, and it lists, one, two, three, four, it lists the six buildings that we have and the number of the dollar amount of the projects, but not the actual project themselves. They're all part of the asset protection plan that we have. Yes?
It was in the packet for the materials of the 522 meeting.
So I can just give a quick overview, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. So these repairs will address hazardous materials, abatement, HVAC repairs, site improvements, electrical upgrades, building envelope repair or replacement. electrical upgrades, building envelope repair or replacement, and other building system improvements that affect the students, staff, health, and safety. So at Colt Andrews, there's over $500,000 worth of work. With Harris, it's $489,000. UCol School, it's approximately $1.4 million. Rockwell is a little over $300,000. Kikamewit is $4.7 million. Mount Home is $4.2 million. So the total agreement that is between 66% and 70% reimbursable through the Department of Education is $11.7 million for the projects over the next five years.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? And as I stated, once we're done, we'll be passing the memorandum for everyone to sign. Do you have any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Make motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made. Campbell to adjourn, second by Ms. McBride. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Make adjourn.